I am not in favor of it. If they want to move, they are paying for all that equipment to be removed out of this business center, not at the city cost. My vote will be no at the city cost. If they want it moved, then they have to move it with their pennies, their dollars. So, I just want everyone to know that that could be coming to the council too, that they are going to look for possible us to pay for part of moving their equipment.
It won't get it out of me either.
I'm just telling you that. So, I will tell you that they do have a tenant agreement signed already. Greg is absolutely right. They have 90 days to give us a response. I believe the contract is up in...
April 30th.
April 30th of next year.
2012.
2012. So, they are in the process of finalizing everything and moving out, so.
Okay.
You've got one more.
All right, Art.
Mine's just a point of order. If the minute taker could reflect it, Eugene Wesley, Alderman Eugene Wesley is now in attendance.
Okay. Public Culture Safety and Judiciary's adjourning. Do I have a... Do I have a... I'll make the motion. Does anybody second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. No? So, yours.
All right. I'll call the Public Works Committee of Order. Make the minute taker still note, everyone's present and Alderman Wesley have entered the building. Eugene Wesley. I need a motion approval.
A little late.
I know I was late. I need approval of the minutes for July 14, 2011.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. I think we don't adjust. All right. Item number four, report recognition, brush collection and tree pruning options. You guys received a packet of couple of options. Obviously, this year has been a very bad year for brush pickup and everything else. So, some other stuff got delayed. So, John, you want to go through this memo briefly and suggest what options you would like to go with?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get into the actual options, the reason why you have this before you, it's been a trying year, to say the least, considering the amount of storms we've had, the ending of the brush collection program last year at a time when people, for the most part, may have had a lot of their maintenance pruning done. We didn't know how much pruning we would have to start picking up. The spring allowed us to cut our teeth with picking up brush again and the inordinate amount of work that that took. And then two large-scale storms that came through definitely provided to be more than I think we, even what at our worst anticipation, it just never ended. Every time we went down the street, somebody would bring out more. We would get done with one storm, there would be another, and people would, we'd give what we thought was an acceptable amount of time to wait between the storm and when we thought would be inadequate time to pick up, wasn't enough. I'm still picking up brush today from storms, and I would highly doubt that we're done. I'm sure we'll be picking up at least for the rest of this month through Labor Day weekend. People are going to be enjoying holidays, they're going to be in their yards, working with the cooler weather. I know the mosquitoes have been problematic, and I'm sure I may take a question or two on that later, but I can only imagine that the brush pickup's going to continue, at least for a little while. And then we have our fall pickup. So, all in all, we've completed about five scheduled, or we will compete, complete about five scheduled brush pickups this season, including the fall pickup yet to be done, and then what we consider to be kind of the holiday pickup, which is the Christmas tree collection. So, if you consider those five pickups, we've probably, or will spend close to $50,000 this year. And that's staff hours, that's hauling costs for hauling the chips out, where once we didn't use to pay for hauling chips out, now we're hauling out chips every two months, paying for that. There's an added fuel cost, there's an added maintenance cost on the equipment. Granted, those costs could have been offset if we were doing our pruning program, but I don't think we could have ever pruned as much, or ran the truck as much, or spent anywhere near as much overtime as we would have if we didn't have that. So, we eliminated a brush collection contract last year about mid-season and saved the city $100,000 this year. But I guess I would disagree and say we've probably spent at least $50,000. Now, if we had these storms go through, would they have been timed appropriately to where it could have been picked up during the monthly brush collection program if the contract was still in place? One of them, definitely. The other one, we probably would have had to do a mid-year or a mid-month pickup. So, that's kind of a recap of the season. The options that are laid out in front of you basically are three, and I'll just summarize them quickly. The first one basically is go back to the original program and tailor it however you folks would like. If you don't want to do eight pickups, we do less, do five pickups, either way. The second option is an emergency brush collection contract. Basically, let us go out, get a contract with the vendor to at least get a contractor in here the next time we have a storm, so we can focus back on our work and actually go and take care of the hangers that are in the trees, work on our street projects and our restoration projects, and not bog us down for a month in picking up brush. And then the third one is the all-encompassing project of brush collection and maintenance and parkway tree pruning. And that was basically to kind of give the three ranges, the minimalist approach, the medium, which is current, and then the extended level of service. So, those are the three.
Kelly A., Kelly B.
Exactly.
Okay. Is that it? I know I have questions.
That's all.
Okay. Alderman Shaw. Go ahead.
I'm still having a problem because up until four years ago, staff picked up the brush. Now, what are they doing now in place of that? I don't understand it. What extra duties do they have that's in place of picking up the brush as they did before? Now, you say that it's kind of even, it's still $50,000 less than the contract. I think personally, I'd like to see staff go back to the way they used to do it four or five years ago, and yes, get an emergency brush collection proposal or whatever we need for that. So, if there's a storm, bring in the people to clean it up quickly. But the everyday stuff, they did it before, why can't they still do it?
I guess two responses that.
One, number of staff in the street division gone down from when we used to do it by one. So, there's one less person, and the one person that I am counting that is in place is actually a working supervisor, so splitting half his time, where in the past, we used to either have what was once a street supervisor position, which then segued into my original position, which was the Assistant Director of Operations. So, in essence, we'll call it a position and a half we're down. Secondly, it would be the increased responsibility for building maintenance and landscape maintenance that's gone on over the last couple of years has been an added increase, where once, you know, we outsourced a fair amount of building maintenance to subcontractors, we're doing those in-house now. Maintenance at this facility, maintenance at the Public Works facility, we're no longer having the, what was once the plant maintenance staff, working on a couple of different buildings. Now, plant maintenance is solely working on their water and wastewater facilities, they're not coming over to Public Works, they're not coming over to City Hall. The landscape, from what I'm told from four years ago, I can only speak to '08 and beyond, the amount of landscaping duties have tripled. I would look at the service requests predating me and the amount of landscaping that's done at the clock garden, that's done at the flagpole garden, the amount of grass cutting that's done, all that has been expanded, the retention pond areas, the maintenance, unless those numbers prior to me getting here were doctored or incorrect, it takes us a lot longer to cut grass than it did some time ago. So, that either tells me we're cutting more grass, grass is growing faster. So, it's a lot of additional work. Service requests, the month of July, you have in front of you 158 service requests. Four years ago, we probably had 90 service requests in a month. People are asking for more service, maybe more people are home, maybe they see more items that are deficient. Lot more work.
Mike, do you have your hand up, or?
This goes out to John Kramer. You know, I have noticed after storms, a lot of people do take advantage of the pruning. And I noticed that during garbage pickup, a lot of people do not tie their stuff up, they just throw it in a big pile and have the city pick it up, which is also overloading our brush pickup. And it's, you know, you tell it's not storm damage, it's been pruned and cut to size. So, I can understand where Mr. Kramer's coming with and saying that he's overwhelmed with the brush collection.
John, one of the things that I don't think we used to do four years ago was a lot of pruning of trees in the parkways. Is that correct? Would you know? Because I believe that was part of the discussion when we did, when we brought on the pickup, the brush pickup collection. And I'll be honest with you, I was one of the guys that voted to stop it a year ago, so. Are the tree prunings, is it getting done, or it's not getting done anymore?
Prior to '08, we didn't have an aerial bucket truck, so we were not pruning any trees in town. So, prior to March of '08, when that truck was delivered, I would highly doubt, other than some ground pruning from a pole pruner, was a lot of pruning getting done in parkway trees. As far as pruning this year, nonexistent. We haven't done anything. Through the winter months, we had a couple of good weeks where we got some good pruning done. Other than that, since the start of spring, since snow melted, nothing.
Can I follow up? What about the televising of lines? That was another thing that we were supposed to be getting done. Are we doing that?
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
Completely different department. That department doesn't have the same constraints. Water and wastewater departments are fairly focused. They're not, other than some flooding issues from time to time with the storms, they're not as affected by long-term job and tasks compiling like the street department per se does. So, for the most part, we're on track with hydrant flushing in our water department, we're on track with our televising and our flushing schedule with the sanitary sewer system. For the most part, this really hasn't caused any other problems except to the street division.
Mr. Winger.
Thank you. I just, one thing I don't want to see us do is duplicate what's provided by the waste haulers. So, if it's in the contract to do certain things, the residents need to bundle their brush and put it out to the side when they do their pruning. But I am okay with bidding out the emergency pickup and having an outside service do that after storms such as we had this summer, as well as if we wanted to do kind of a hybrid of option two and three, because option three, pruning is important, we have to take care of our parkway trees and we're not. So, I would like to see some kind of service do that, and it can be an outside service. I would be okay with that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Murm.
Yeah, well, keep in mind, we're coming to you today because there's an obvious problem. I mean, Mr. Kramer's been overloaded this season. Expect that it'll probably happen again next season. Obviously, we got, we eliminated the brush program, really not working. Alderman Winger's right, though, I mean, there is a stipulation in our garbage contract that residents are responsible for the small tweaks, the small brush to do that on their own. And you know what? I mean, I know a lot of them don't like that. I get calls, hey, why'd you eliminate the brush program? But, I mean, we're trying to have a cost savings here, but at the same time, the storm damage killed us. We're not doing any of the tree pruning. Whereas if we did have a contractor for these emergency storms, we would be able to do the normal tree pruning, so we wouldn't have to contract out for that. But right now, the system's broke, so we definitely need to make some type of an adjustment.
Mr. Woods.
Can we put together an analysis of all those options with the budgets or numbers attached to them, so that we could make a decision on that, whether it all came in-house, whether it went out-house, all out-of-house, whether we split it up and figure out, try to figure out where we get the biggest bang for the buck and what makes sense?
Mr. Kramer.
Just, I guess, a quick question on that. I think it would be tough for us to key in on some pricing unless we knew what you wanted us to compare. If you wanted us to go back to a full brush collection schedule, would you want to reduce the number of months? Would you want to go back to what we had it before, which was eight months? And then if it's the emergency program, that's going to be really tough to estimate, just because I have no way of knowing how many storms we're going to have, or how much brush is going to be put out. That's going to be on a T&amp;M basis only, and, you know, for the most part, all I would do for that, if that was the option that was selected, I would, you know, poll several contractors, get a ballpark idea of how other towns may maybe do an emergency brush collection, then send out a formal bid to get some T&amp;M prices for a three-year stint on a contract, and basically just lock it in that, you know, if we call and there's a storm, you're going to provide us two trucks, two crews, for as long as we need them at a time and material rate of this rate. That was kind of how I was envisioning that, that third option or lowest option.
You want to follow up?
I know it's not going to be easy, but based on those numbers, like you said, if you got some numbers, we could theorize that we're going to need them three times a year based on what's going on, to use that as a guiding tool. And if we took our old system of eight pickups and then a modified or reduced system of four pickups as options, and then what would it be? You're saying we basically were missing two people. What would it cost to bring it back in-house also? Thanks.
Alderman Winger.
I'm going to make a motion to direct Mr. Kramer to go out for a bid for a emergency pickup, three-year contract, as well as a tree pruning program.
We get a couple more questions answered for some other people. All right. Get a second on the motion. Do I have a second on a motion? Little second on the motion. All right, we have a second on motion. Mayor, please.
John, when we did the brush pickup, the contract was $98,000, $100,000. So, it's about between $10,000 and $12,000 a pickup, I think it was, because we did eight, right? And after the storms, we talked about overtime. I think you guys came up with a number of $3,000 cost to the city. Would that be an option to have the guy stay on overtime versus the emergency pickups, $10,000 or $12,000 versus $3,000?
See, the problem is not the monetary amount so much with the overtime. If you look at the log sheets, none of their regular job activities are getting done. You're having a backlog, nothing else is getting done. Yeah, we can pay them overtime and get the job done and potentially save money, but the regular work is falling behind the wayside, they're not doing proactive tree pruning, they're not doing asphalt repairs, they're not doing anything else other than overtime and collecting brush. That's the problem.
Alderman Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion, as Alderman Winger did, for the emergency brush pickup after storms, and leave the balance as it is.
I have a motion.
We did it before, pardon me? No, we...
We have a motion.
We have, I thought there was...
We have a motion.
Oh, we did have a second, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We had some questions still to answer. But we do have a second, but we'll see where it goes.
But may I ask them, what the tree pruning, pruning, you're saying about doing that outsourcing as well?
Yes.
What would that come to approximately? I mean...
Mr. Kramer.
I guess I just need to clarify. And one of the options I selected, it was, you know, to either go back to a modified brush collection solely, go to a emergency contract, or do the next level, the brush collection plus pruning located within it. Alderman Winger suggested emergency plus pruning. The issue with that is that the pruning gets taken care of out-of-house, and the emergency portion gets done out-of-house, but the city staff still collects brush on a day-to-day basis?
Or on a twice-a-year basis, how it's set up now.
Mr. Kramer.
I need to reiterate, the twice-a-year basis does not work. The residents are not used to having only two pickups, and they're putting brush out anyway. So, if I, I would be lying to you folks if I said I would only pick up brush twice a year. And if you were to come to me in a year and say, John, how are things going? Are we getting brush collected and our jobs getting done? I think I would be remiss if I could tell you anything other than no. We are going to be picking up brush, no matter how many phone calls, reverse 911, newsletters, information packets we send out to residents, they're not going to put it in their trash out for Arc to pick up, because they're not going to cut it that small for them to do it. They're going to haul the branch out and leave it at the end of their street, then at their curb, then they're going to call Public Works daily until it's picked up. That's how it's been trending. And if we have a storm, every time we have a storm, it's going to get brought out. So, even though I love the idea of having the pruning aspect in there, I agree with that, I would much rather have Public Works staff working on pruning. In essence, I think that's a better craft or a better tools of their trade to be doing than picking up brush.
Alderman Shaw, do you want to follow up? Yes, go ahead.
So, what you're saying is that we're paying the waste company to pick up brush, and then you also want to pay another company to pick up brush. Why don't we just drop the waste company picking up brush and have it done by somebody else and have it all done? Why are we paying twice for it? Because people just don't want to bundle their branches. And to me, this is kind of ridiculous to pay twice. It's our tax money.
Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Murm just mentioned to me that this, it's not an added cost. We don't believe we're paying anything extra for that service. It's not a different truck. I think they're just picking it up in the normal waste truck.
It is on the bill, it's a separate...
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. Couple of quick points. One, it is broken out in the contract, there are three components to the waste contract. There's the solid waste, the recycling, and the yard waste. Couple of caveats with that, the yard waste is also the brown craft bags of leaves and grass clippings, or the cans that people put out with the red stickers that we give out to people. So, that's also included in that. And for the brush component, it's only for branches up to two inches in diameter, no more than four feet in length, or two feet around and less than 50 pounds, and it has to be tied with twine together. So, to the extent that it's small brush, that's true, but you know, if it's a 50-year-old tree that falls down in their backyard or whatever, that, they're not going to pick that up regardless. So, there is a couple of different distinctions between perhaps what Mr. Kramer's guys are picking up over two inches versus, you know, grass clippings and brown craft bags. But to the extent that he is picking up some stuff under two inches, you are correct. But there are probably two different, two different layers of brush that are out there. There's the small true brush, and then there's more dimensional-sized trees and stuff going on.
But if it's a, as you said, if it's a backyard tree, we shouldn't be doing it anyway. Private citizens should take care of the cost of removing trees from his own property. We're talking about parkway.
We don't, we don't remove trees out of the backyard. Person is, if a tree falls down in the backyard, a tree fell down in your backyard, and knowing that you know the city's going to pick it up, wouldn't you cut it up yourself and roll it out to the street like everyone else is, and let the city pick it up? Even though it's in your backyard.
Not if the ordinance says you don't.
But how do you prove that it, the ordinance, someone did that? You're going to have, I mean, that's the problem we run into, because I will tell you right now, there are still people out there putting out brush, and they think we got endless brush pickup. Alderman calls.
I don't know why we're arguing about this. We goofed. When we, when we said no brush pickup, we canceled it because of somebody saying it's too much money, put a load on John because of the two storms. He don't know how many storms he's going to have next year. Nobody can figure that out. And the way the weather is lately, you can have, we could have a tornado come through here, which comes close. Let's get an outfit that'll do it for five or six times. When we had, never had people call us and complain about brush pickup as much as this time. And two times a year is, I don't want to mention it, but two times a year is not enough. We never had trouble for three or four years, when they had a brush, you could put any tree, branch out there. I got, people keep putting branches out, they're putting them in the street, they don't want them on the parkway because they got nice lawns on the parkway, they don't want to kill the lawns because they don't know how long it's going to be before the brush, the tree is picked up. And if you have a tree that goes down in the back, you have somebody come out, and if he doesn't, if he doesn't take the tree away, where do they put it? They put it on their front, on the, on the parkway, all right? I have maintenance on my property. And the guy comes with an empty truck, he leaves with a full truck, and he, none of it's on our property. So, I mean, I, and you don't have to, we got to have a service, because they can't continue to do all this and expect to do the other stuff too. This is ridiculous. Last year, I said no to it, and I've had many calls with people that complained, when are we going to get the branches off the street? So, that's, this is ridiculous. Part time. I'm done.
Mr. Kramer.
I would like to answer Alderman Shawkey's question first. He brought up about the rear yard tree issue. The brush collection program is for any private property brush that's generated. So, if your average homeowner goes out and contracts with ABC Tree Removal Company to take a tree down, the city should not be removing that.
That's right.
It says clearly in the brush collection program, in the newsletter, in the city ordinance, any contractor-generated material will not be removed. Unfortunately, I don't have any way of policing that. So, unless my staff sees a contractor taking a tree down, then suddenly, the next day, they drive by and realize there's brush stacked to the parkway, I can't contradict that. And would I be able to go knock on a resident's door next door and say, hey, did your neighbor have a contractor remove it? Or did he do it last weekend with his brother, his son, and four other people around the neighborhood? I'm not going to make that argument, and personally, I don't think you'd want me to. I, I believe that, you know, the brush collection program is something that the residents utilize, and I think it is a service, and it's a service that sets us apart from other towns. I talked to other directors and other staff from other public works agencies, and not a lot of other communities do that. Wooddale's been doing it for some time, you can tell because it's ingrained in the residents' minds, because no matter the month... because no matter the month, no matter how long it's been since we eliminated the program, the last full week of every month, I guarantee when I drive around town, suddenly limbs and prunings appear. So I mean, it's a service that they're used to.
Alman Winger?
If we do go back to the brush collection program, Mr. Kramer, will your team be able to prune, to start pruning?
Mr. Kramer?
I'd like to start pruning now. I mean, I don't want to give up on that. That's something that, you know, we've spent a lot of time, love and energy on, is training our staff, getting certified, getting the equipment we need. The last thing I want to do is mothball that program. So even if it takes a late winter and the guys can get out this winter and start pruning again, we're going to hit it hard, and that's our intention. You know, I have no thoughts of not pruning trees. We are, you know, we are a Tree City USA. We have some designations, and I'd like to keep that and to be as proactive as we can in pruning. Unfortunately, this summer's been a joke. We haven't been able to do anything. I also want to reiterate, I didn't really say it specifically in the memo, but this would not take effect till next May. We would go through the budget process with this. What we would probably do is send a bid out at some point this fall and get some numbers and see where we were at, once you folks decide on a level of service that you wanted.
Okay, but just that if we outsourced the brush pickup, will we be able to prune in, you know, winter and summer and, you know, do a pruning program?
Mr. Kramer?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
And I think there's a motion on the floor. I'd like to amend the motion to once again add those options and bring them back to us so we can look at it intelligently, discuss it, and figure out what's the best avenue of approach to solve all these issues. Thank you.
I'm willing to amend that, providing that we do go out to bid. So it's not, you know, Mr. Kramer going back and doing a lot of guesstimates and then coming to us, that he's able to go out to bid for all the different types of services.
Okay.
And does the seconder agree?
Okay. All right, so there is a motion.
John, quick question while you're thinking about this. If we didn't go to the full eight pickups, we went May, July, August, and October, would that help or work? Would that work? Or maybe it's not even a good idea?
Mr. Kramer?
No, that's right in line with my thought was, eight pickups? Personally, I think that's a little much. For the most part, you know, ideally, the pickups would be May through August. You know, not a lot of brush is generated in March and April, unless we have a really quick spring. People aren't getting in their yards and doing any work before then. You may have an occasional windstorm that kicks through that knocks some material around. But other than that, the bulk of it, as we've seen all year long, June, July, and August, so far have been the busiest months. Some people probably still meander around in their yards in September and will probably see some more generated material. October, last final cleanup. So, you know, any of those four or five months in there, I really think are ideal. And again, you know, the Christmas tree pickup, we're still going to pick those up ourselves as we've always done. I doubt that's going to change, you know, as people are getting, as history goes on, people have been using less and less real trees and more with the fake trees. So that is really starting to dry up.
Okay, well, I have a couple of questions. Just so you guys know, in the summary in July, in July, you got 158 service calls. Keep in mind, it's patching road projects, replacing sod for water main breaks. You know, mowing, I believe we have increased in mowing now because I believe we do some of the foreclosures now too, you know, so. And we have increased in mowing this year. I mean, so most on the floor, but I'd like to do a four-month pickup. You know, because I'll tell you now, this got truth. Even though it's in our garbage, I have not seen anyone tie up their bundles, not in my ward. I have never seen a bundle tied up in my ward, so. Well, we have a, we have a motion. Could you repeat the motion, though? Because that got changed some of the times.
The motion was to direct John Kramer to go out for bid for an emergency pickup for a year contract in for tree pruning program. Also include adding options and return to city council for review.
Okay, so are we, now, we are not going out for bid, are we? Was that your motion?
Yeah, but it was a, I believe it was a multi-year contract. Because I think you want like a three-year contract, so not just one year, but three years. And to go out for bid for it, and Alderman Woods added, to have different options in there so we can see all the different options and what they're going to cost.
But now are we taking out the tree pruning? Because there was a discussion...
We don't know yet. We're going to be presented with those options and go which one makes sense, four pickups, eight pickups. Eight pickups might be cheaper than four pickups. We don't know that.
You know what? Out there, there's too much thrown out here on this motion, but...
I don't think it is either.
Take the roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
This is for, this is for minor pickup, right? Emergency pickup?
No, everything.
This is for citywide...
Emergency pickup?
No. Plus pruning.
Plus pruning.
And the programs?
And the programs. Option number one and two.
But nothing about yearly?
No, but a pruning.
One for yearly.
The motion on the floor.
Mr. Mermis?
My understanding, Alderman Coles, is this is for what you were advocating, the reinstitution of the citywide brush collection program with some added options in there to see a cost comparison as to which program we want to reintroduce.
Okay, but that ain't what she said.
That is now a yes for John.
That's a yes.
Got it. Okay, Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sazmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yeah, motion carries. So, John, do you understand the direction that you have to go? I mean, I'm, go ahead.
What I would like to do before I go to any bids, I'm going to take the numbers that we had from the last brush collection. I'm going to modify that and break it out per month. Hopefully, they'll give us a ballpark estimate on what bids will come in at. I'll make a couple of phone calls to some other tree companies and see what other towns got, considering our size, and see. I will then also run the in-house numbers. I do have one quick question, if I may ask. The in-house numbers are going to be difficult for me to run because you need to let me know what level of service you want. If we're back collecting brush and doing pruning because we only have an emergency contract, in order to do both, I'm almost going to have to start buying equipment at that point. I don't think you want to see equipment purchase listed in those options. There's going to be some serious dollars there, and a body is a body. But when you start adding trucks into the mix too, over three years, you might see some disproportionate numbers. So I'm going to break it out as much as I can, and I'll come back to you before we go to any sort of bid.
And just keep in mind, guys, we can't force our employees to work overtime. You know, it's an option if they want to work overtime or not. We can't order them to work overtime.
I just wanted to say, that is what we're looking for. You know, that, just what you brought up, you may have to buy another piece of equipment. Obviously, now we can rule, you know, rule that out, but I'd like to see them all together. So I think we're on the same page now.
Okay. All right. All right, and we'll go to item number five. Pay request to Swallow Construction, a deer path in amount not to exceed $532,869. That will be my motion. It's a reduction of a road project. If you remember, a retainer will still remain $117,874.65. So that is my motion to pay this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions?
Mr. Kramer?
In my haste of writing this, please change the current retainage to $50,700. It doesn't reflect any different. The pay requests you have on the subsequent sheets are correct. My memo is incorrect, so the amount that actually will get sent on the I dot form is actually correct. My memo is incorrect. I apologize for the change.
So remaining will be $50,000? I don't know. Oh, go ahead.
The current retainage on my list is incorrect. On the subsequent pages behind that, the documentation signed by Baxter and Woodman, the I dot form is all correct. My memo was incorrect. I apologize for the error in transposing.
All right. So that is still my motion. It's a road project that's been ongoing. Hopefully, they'll link asphalt this week. Mr. Woods?
Looking over the numbers, it's the job they're saying is 90% done. Do you think that that's an accurate depiction of the amount of work done?
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
I think as of today, 90% is done. At the writing of this and the payout, I don't think we're quite to there. The items that are on there are verified and correct. I think their percentage there is a little, was a little off at the writing of that. They have gotten some of the smaller, low-hanging items done. Really, the only thing that's left now, the milling was completed this week. All we have is final surface, some driveways left to do, and obviously, the restoration portion of it, which really isn't that costly if you look at the breakout on the bid tab sheet. You can, you know, see where those items come in at. But for the most part, most of the heavy lifting is done.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I was just looking at it, and I didn't want to spend the time to recreate the whole spreadsheet and check all the math. But I was just looking and going, okay, obviously, at this stage of the project, some of those things obviously are now credits. So when I started looking at those, I was just unsure if those numbers worked out. I didn't check all the math. I'm assuming you guys, Baxter, did that.
Mr. Kramer?
Correct. That's Mr. Daxtiner's memo. He is the D doctor.
I have a motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Coles?
I was over there today, so cut out, ready to go, it's all ground and everything. All they're doing is just to decide the dirt and make it the ditches and smooth and everything out. It's getting pretty close to being done.
Okay.
For you next week, you'll be done.
Mr. Kramer?
Would you like an update on Deer Path? I can give a quick...
Oh, sure, if you could give a, I know we got to be almost close to the deadline on that.
I received an email from Anthony Rendino, owner of Swallow Construction, actually today, saying that they were going to finish up the driveways tomorrow. They're looking at surface the week after the holiday. That will be probably the quickest portion of it, and then you'll probably see the final sod going down after that point with mailboxes, traffic marking, and then removal of the traffic control. So for the most part, substantial completion date was pushed back by, I believe, six rain days. Substantial completion is everything except for the final surface. So basically, they're on time, within budget, and things seem to be going along swimmingly. So hopefully, the weather will hold out for us, and we'll be able to get the surface down and be a project feather in you folks' cap.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. All right, and your other item number six is report recommendation contract award to Arrow Road Construction for 2011 street resurfacing and sidewalk program in amount not to exceed $993,532.74.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Go ahead. I have a motion. I have a second. Go ahead.
When is the work on the 2011, when are these streets are scheduled to be done or just to be started?
Mr. Kramer?
This work, when is this going to work begin? Once city council approves it, contracts will be signed that first week of September. We would like to get the contractors in here as soon as possible, knowing that the asphalt plants traditionally close up based on weather around November, end of October. We'd like to hit it hard, so the faster we can get this approved and contracts done, we'll start grinding and overlaying. Thank you.
Let me ask you one question. On this award, if something happens that we don't get the 2011, the asphalt plants happen to close, or we aren't completed with this, does this, will this contract carry on to next year then to finish this road project at the beginning, once asphalt up? Because I'm telling you, you're looking at almost September here.
Mr. Kramer?
I think if we start getting to the point where we're getting dicey weather, we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves with grinding, and we'll just have to play it by ear. I would not want to leave a surface ground and not have surface on top of it for the winter season. So again, as soon as we can get this passed and out to contract, I'll emphasize the, you know, urgency of this getting done. Arrow's a good contractor. They're the subcontractor for Deer Path currently. They're putting surface down on us. They haven't had any scheduling snafus. Everything's been, you know, directly on point. I would imagine nothing like that happening unless we had a really goofy year. But again, I wouldn't want to get too ahead of ourselves with grinding and overlaying. So like I said, Arrow's done work for us in the past. I have full confidence in the contractor. It's a good price. I think we'll be good.
Well, that is my concern here. If we get bad weather again and push everything back, and we don't go ahead and grind, we pull the string back a little bit and say, "Well, wait a minute, it's getting too close." To finish this contract off, my question is, is this contract going to continue into 2012? Is there a clause in that contract if we do not finish this on a timing matter that this project continues into 2012 to finish this road project? That is my concern. Mr. Kramer?
The contract continues until all the road work is done, signed off, final waivers are received, final bid, and you folks have approved it. So the contract goes indefinitely till the work's completed or until we terminate the contract.
That's the question I had. All right. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I didn't consider future meeting. The only thing that I have on there, could you give us, I was going through my file at home. Could you do me a favor and find out when Elizabeth Drive is going to be removed? The turn lane's supposed to be removed and put back to restore the way it's supposed to be. It's been some time. I'd like to know status on that. Oh, if you can answer it now, go ahead.
It's done.
When was it done?
Got done this week. Final restoration. Residents happy. Everything is complete.
Did I blink my eye and it was done? Because I do not remember seeing it done. You took out the turn lane.
It wasn't a turn lane. It was an encroachment of pavement on private property. It was not a marked turn lane.
I thought we had a problem with that. It was delayed so long because of something with the signals.
No, the signals were not the issue. We had the area surveyed by our engineer. They marked it out. The resident is happy. Staff has confirmed with the resident. Everything is hunky-dory.
I apologize. I must have missed that. Then my drive through the town. Okay, any other items, future meeting?
Mr. Kramer?
Can I direct your attention to two information items that were located in your packet as well? One, the commercial street dirt pile. We just wanted to let everyone know that that project did come in under budget. Originally, we identified $200,000. We made it just shy of that, $192 and... We made it just shy of that, $192 and change. The second item that I had on information was the NOAA line being down. I know some residents do call that line. That is the 773 NOAA that has the creek elevation, the, the rain rate, and the total storm rate. That has been down. That took a lightning strike last Saturday to the plant, which then had a power surge going through and did some damage to the modem. The, there, that is a sole source provider issue that, that software and that, I shouldn't even call it software at this point, the actual phone modem dialer and all the accoutrements associated with that were put in in about '86. It's relatively old. I think it may have a chisel and stone tablet next to it that it types on. It's that old. Right now, the dialer was sent out on Tuesday to be repaired. We're hoping it's back within the next seven to 10 days from that. So we're, you're looking at about seven days of that service being out. We have had some concerned citizens. We did give them some other websites to go to, as I indicated on my memo, and we'll keep you up to date. And a reverse 911 was sent out by the police department as well.
To inform them the NOAA line was down?
Correct.
So there's no other source that maybe update that whole NOAA line? And I mean, if it's that old and we're repairing so many times?
The problem is, that system talks to some other antiquated systems in the treatment plant. So it will be, it will be reworked in the new treatment plant design when that time comes. We're hoping to Band-Aid it along, long enough to keep it active and viable until such time as we can replace it all in one quick motion.
I have no other item on my agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Specifically.